Welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission. On Tuesday, May 24th, this meeting is called to order. I'll ask staff to take roll call of the commissioners, please.
Uh, yes. Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Hayman?
Here.
Commissioner Samuzi?
Here.
Commissioner Shock?
Here.
And Acting Chair Mercado?
Here. Thank you. So before we start, just want to officially welcome our newest Commissioner, Kelly Shock. And super excited to have you on the commission. You don't have to, but if you would like to introduce yourself and say a few things about you, we'd totally love to have that introduction.
Sure, thank you. Thanks for the warm welcome, really excited to be here. A little bit about me, I've been in San Rafael now for three years. I actually, I grew up in the East Bay. I lead developer marketing at a small database startup based out of New York City. And I'm a mother to two, two little kids. I have a two-year-old and a four-year-old. And I love it here, I love this community, I love, I love the businesses here and just really excited to contribute more and, and work with all of you and, and learn a lot through the process.
Great, thank you, welcome again. Thanks for serving and helping out the community, appreciate it. So next will be the approval of the order of the agenda items unless somebody would like to change the agenda tonight. Seeing none, then if we can move forward the meeting procedures tonight, please.
Uh, yes. And due to teleturn place order, we have had to establish new ways of conducting our public meetings. And at this time, well, we have everyone, we'll ask people when our item is up to turn on our camera. And this meeting is being recorded and streamlined, streamed live to YouTube. Viewers are welcome to attend by telephone by calling 669-900-6833 and entering the meeting ID which is 897-4566-6511 pound. Or you may watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. And even though we currently have no attendees, if they arrive, they will use the raise their hand icon at the bottom of the screen if they're attending by Zoom and use the star nine on their phone when the chair opens the public hearing. And any correspondence that was submitted prior to the meeting in email or letter has been forwarded to the commission. Closed captioning is available for this meeting and the link is on YouTube. Thank you.
Thank you. So a quick overview of the meeting. Procedures tonight, we're going to do a staff report. Then we'll have 10 minutes for the applicant. And we'll open it up for public hearing, bring it back for the commissioners to discuss. And then we will close the public hearing, have our deliberations and vote. So the next item is urgent communications. Anyone with an urgent communication on a topic not on the agenda may address the commission at this time.
And as mentioned, we have no one in attendance, so there's no one to address the commission.
Okey dokey. Let's move on to consent calendars. It's approval of the minutes. Anybody have any issues with the minutes? If not, go ahead and make a motion to approve them.
So moved. Commissioner Samuzi?
Commissioner Hayman, now second.
Awesome. I have no issues with it. Let's roll call and vote.
Okay, and again officially, we should open the public hearing, but again, since no one's in attendance, we will move to the vote. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayman?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado? Oh, wait, you go at the end.
That's alright.
Sorry about that.
That's alright.
Commissioner Samuzi?
Yes.
And Commissioner Shock?
Sorry, just to clarify, this is to approve the minutes from the last meeting? Correct. Okay, so I guess I would abstain since I wasn't there.
That is fine, and for the record, for all commissioners, if you are not at the meeting, you do not, you're not required to abstain. But it's fine if you abstain, so.
Got it.
Those people do.
Okay, thank you.
Okey doke, moving along. Public hearing. Senate Bill SB9, the California Home Act. Looks like we have some proposed amendments to the San Rafael Municipal Code. And if we can have staff do the presentation, that'd be great.
Yes. We'll be a trick. May one second here. Alrighty, can you see the screen okay?
Yes.
Presentation. Excellent. Alright, good evening. I am Leslie Mendez, Planning Manager, and I'm here with my colleague Jeff Balenci, Senior Planner. Tonight, we present to you for review and recommendation to City Council, a draft ordinance to implement provisions of Senate Bill 9, the California Home Act or SB9. This went into effect on January 1st of this year. Our presentation tonight, we will provide a brief summary of the SB9 component, review objective standards that are imposed by SB9, summarize existing city standards that will apply to SB9 development, review standards in which the city has discretion, and provide staff's recommendation on discretionary standards. Within the constraints of SB9 provision, staff has recommended standards which we believe will assist to encourage and streamline the production of infill housing units while simultaneously balancing access and egress consideration. And with that, I turn it over to Jeff.
Alright, thanks Leslie. So this bill consists of two primary components. One requires ministerial approval of two primary houses on a single-family residential parcel. And the other requires ministerial approval of an urban lots split, which is basically a subdivision of an existing single-family lots into two lots. The spoke, uh, okay, sorry. And the city may impose existing objective development standards as long as they do not preclude the construction of two units of at least 800 square feet on a parcel. The city can only deny SB9 application if it does not meet objective standards or if it would have impacts on public health and safety that cannot be mitigated. In addition, there are specific restrictions on how the city may regulate these applications, which we will go into detail here. So all single-family, this applies to all single-family residential zone parcels except for historic properties, properties where the LSAC was used to evict tenants in the last 15 years, as well as environmentally sensitive areas, environmental hazardous. There's, there's another whole longer list, but this is just sort of a highlight of them. In addition, demolition is generally not permitted for rental units or deed restricted rental units. And so the objective standards that are imposed by SB9, so these include floor area, again, at least 800 square feet per unit. Rear setback, no more than four feet rear or side setback for units that are no more than 800 square feet. We cannot apply any setbacks on an existing structure or a structure constructed in the same location into the same dimensions as an existing structure. And then finally, we can only require us one parking space per unit. And those exceptions are basically if they're within a half a mile of a major transit stop or within a half a mile of a car share. So in terms of the existing objective development standards that are on the books in the city's zoning ordinance that would apply to SB9 application, I'm sorry, yeah, so those include maximum of 30 feet height and then front setback of 15 feet to 20 feet depending on the zoning district. Lot coverage of 20%, 4% depending on zoning district. And upper floor maximum area of 50% to 75% of a lot coverage calculation, again, in the zoning district. And in addition, if a property is in an overlay district such as the Hillside Overlay or the Eichler Alliance Overlay District, then any objective standards in those overlay districts would apply as well. And then additional objective standards that are left to city discretion on SB9 applications. So we could impose a maximum floor area as long as it's more than 800 square feet for these applications. And then for units that are larger than 800 square feet, we could impose a maximum height as well as minimum setbacks up to the district minimum. So basically, say if the zoning district has a 15-foot rear setback, we can't create, uh, require a larger setback than that. In addition, cannot impose, impose no side or rear yard setbacks other than to accommodate life and safety. Oh, that's right, this is, the bullet point changed a little bit. Basically, this is, we could if we want to reduce that setback and we, again, we could if we want to require no parking. So that's what those last two bullets are saying. And then just to continue on that. So with regards to ADUs, what the city can do is if somebody were to opt to use both two-unit development as well as the lot split development, the city could say, at the end of the day, you can have no more than four units on the original lot. So basically, two units on the two new lots. However, the city can be more flexible and we could say, you know what, you can have, you can have ADUs in addition to primary units. And you could either not restrict the size or we could restrict the size of those ADUs that are done basically beyond what is mandated by state law anyways. So for staff recommendation, we are not recommending any maximum floor area requirement. And we're requiring, recommending just a simple minimum four-foot side and rear setbacks for all of these applications. We're recommending that we do require one off-street parking space per unit as allowed by SB9. And then for developments utilizing both urban lots split and the two-unit development provisions in terms of ADUs, we're recommending that we do allow those ADUs on those applications, but that any ADUs done beyond what's required to allow by state law, so basically going beyond four total units on the original lot to basically keeping that to under 500 square feet. So that would count towards the city's low-income housing obligation.
Thank you, Jeff. Switching gears to urban lot splits, SB9 allows for any lot within single-family zoning to be divided into two lots, provided that each lot has a minimum size of 1,200 square feet. The lots must also roughly be the same size, the smaller parcel may not be less than 40% of the pre-subdivided lot area. And additionally, the city may not impose standards that would physically preclude the construction of two units on either of the resulting parcels or that would result in a unit size of less than 800 square feet. In addition, the city may not require the correction of non-conforming zoning conditions as part of any approval for these types of projects. Urban lot splits would be subject to existing objective development standards that are located in Title 15 of the municipal code subdivision. We associate standards that do not conflict with the provisions of SB9 and these include graded slopes shall not exceed a two-to-one ratio, retaining wall shall not exceed eight feet in height, lots shall be graded to drain to a public or private street. Fire hydrants must be spaced so that there is a minimum, or I should say a maximum of a 400-foot spacing between hydrants. And all utilities with a few exceptions shall be undergrounded. SB9 allows the city discretion on the following standards for urban lot splits. One is we may adopt a minimum lot size smaller than 1,200 square feet per parcel. We may require easements for the provision of public services and facilities such as water, sewage, cable, electricity. And we may require that each parcel has access to, provide access to, or adjoin the public right of way. Again, to encourage resilient development of our neighborhoods, including creation of lots and housing units that have access to utility and effective emergency services, staff recommends and has included the following objective standards in the draft ordinance. And that is the requirement for easements for the provision of public services and facility and the requirement that each parcel have access to, provide access to, or adjoin the public right of way. As mentioned, SB9 requires a local agency to eliminate objective development standards applicable either to the urban lot split or to a two-unit development on a project-by-project basis if the standards would prevent an otherwise eligible lot from being split or prevent the construction of up to two units of at least 800 square feet in size. To assist in the streamlined processing of such future applications that do not meet the objective standards, as well as to provide transparency to both applicants and neighboring residents, staff recommends that the city adopt a hierarchy of development standards to be waived. Staff has suggested, as incorporated in the draft ordinance, that standards be set aside in the following order until the site can contain two 800-square-foot units. That would be natural state where applicable, lot coverage, front setbacks, and then the second floor area limitation. And finally, just to note that as of an hour before this meeting, staff has not received any public comment on this item. And tonight, we ask that you do accept public comment if anyone has arrived. Discuss and provide feedback regarding elements of the proposed SB9 ordinance amendments where the city does have discretion and adopt a resolution recommending approval of the proposed ordinance and associated amendments for City Council review and consideration. And the SB9 ordinance is scheduled to be heard at the June 21st City Council meeting. This is a Tuesday, which falls on Monday after our Juneteenth holiday, excuse me. So thank you for your time and Jeff and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Leslie, thank you, Jeff. Okay, I'll bring you back to the commissioners if you have any questions for staff on what they presented.
I do have a couple of questions, if I may start.
No, you may not. Yeah, please.
For slide number, for slide number 10, I'm trying to just get a sense of intent, I'm trying to visualize like the intent behind sort of the, the shapes that they're creating these parameters for. Hey, could you, could you pop that slide up real quick?
Sure.
I want to make sure I'm referring to the right slide as well. Yeah, okay, so for this one, in particular, where we have both this minimum size of 1,200 square feet as well as it must not be less than 40% of the lot area. I guess my question here is, do you have a map of all of the potentially affected parcels in San Rafael? Because what I'm, what I'm trying to get a just a sense of is that are there any like really huge lots that, you know, you know, less than 20% of the lot area might still be more than 1,200 square feet?
Now, to answer your question, no, I don't, we don't have them mapped out. But there are some rather large lots that are zoned, single-family. So that would be all lots that have an R in the zoning title. And that are quite large, like acre-sized lots. So to answer your question, I think many of the lots would be, would easily accommodate two lots greater than 1,200 square feet.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if actually.
Yeah, no, so that's. Go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify because those two provisions weren't necessarily obvious to me in the beginning. So say for instance, you have like a 5,000-square-foot lot. At the end of the day, the smaller lot still has to be 40% of the area, so that would be 2,000 square feet. You're not allowed to go down to 1,200 square feet, just want to make sure that that's clear.
No, that, that was clear. So that's, that's what I'm saying is that they're, that's what I'm wondering, before I get into hypothetical edge cases, if there were any lots where, in San Rafael, where if you were to subdivide it by more than two parts, you could get something, let's say like 1,600 or 1,700 square feet that would be less than 20% of the total lot area. Because if it's, if it's an ultra edge case, it doesn't apply to any parcels, then like this line of questioning doesn't matter. But if there are, that it does apply to, then we would want to just make sure that we're not unnecessarily constraining potential for their splitting of lots.
Well, by, by state law, if you split, if you use SB9 ones for urban lot split, you may only use it once. You can't do cumulative subdivision through SB9. So if you have a 5,000-square-foot lot or a five-acre lot, you can only subdivide it once. So.
Okay. Would that, would that?
Using SB9 provisions, I should say.
Right, so then that's the next point is that would that then like prevent it from further splits down the road for, you know, by additional state laws? Or is that just like not even feasible or realistic to try and scenario plan around?
And it would be prevented to do another SB9 split? That's a very interesting question, is if you had a very large lot, if you could further divide it using just subdivision map act.
Yeah, so yeah, in other words, if you could like mix and map, mix and match different state laws to like very much subdivide a very large lot, that might circumvent some of the intent. That's why I'm just trying to get a sense of like, the intent here is to not create really small, not really small, but like lots of different separate parcels for, you know, like really kind of spamming the density there? Is that, is that kind of the intent? Or is this like sort of stepwise as opposed to full bore?
And I believe the intent is to streamline the process of development and a, you know, to allow the two units. And I think that the intent is that if you wanted to do more than that, that you would actually use the provisions that are provided, not through SB9, like due to tenant map or the track map.
Okay, got it.
That is my thought, yeah.
Okay, so there's not really a sense of like trying to necessarily control the extent of development? Just introducing one, one thing that just like makes it a little bit more easy to move through.
Correct, and I believe a lot of the incentive behind this is for infill development. So I was thinking of more like neighborhood, not the, they could open multi-acre hillside lots, though it does still apply if they're zoned, single-family.
Okay, cool. That was all for me.
Thank you. Really good question. Any other commissioners, questions? Before we open it up to public? No? Okey doke. Let's open it up for the public comment, please.
Great, and, and we have one member in attendance. And if you wish to speak, please use the raise the hand icon down at the bottom of the screen. I don't think you're calling in, but if you are, please press star nine. And we have Bill Carney. Bill, you have, did I allow you to speak?
Okay, good evening. Appreciate the commission taking this item up and look forward to the council's action on it as well. And I'm Chair of Sustainable San Rafael. We're in general very supportive of additional and particularly of smaller units and affordable by design units within existing developed areas. So this ordinance seems to support that in, in, in many ways. I had one question, I guess, and one comment, or maybe two comments. I was unclear whether the recommendations related to the, what's the division here, the lots, I'm sorry, not the lots, but the units themselves retained the 50% maximum coverage for lots less than 5,000 square feet. And it seemed like there was a discrimination kind of against the smaller lots. And so if that's the case, I'd like that explained. And, but perhaps I didn't see it among the recommendations, so maybe that drops away. The, the other thing I'd like you to consider is that under the lot division portion of this, the hierarchy of standards that would be set aside, recommended by staff, I would request that number one, the natural state being the first thing up to be eliminated would be in fact number, number four, that that be the last and not the first. And I would just say that, you know, it's, the, the natural elements we have within our residential communities and within San Rafael at large are incredibly important to the, the character of the, of the city, but also simply in their own right. I mean, you know, conserving natural areas, what we have left of them is extremely important as natural elements are in fact part of the community that you represent. And I would ask you to keep that representation in mind in this hierarchy and simply reverse, well, not reverse, but put, put number one, number four in that hierarchy so that nature is given its due representation by the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
And Bill is our only attendee.
Alright, batting a thousand tonight.
Yep.
Okay, then we will close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Give this an opportunity to provide staff our thoughts on this item. And for Commissioner Shock, we sometimes go in order, we initially start with sort of general thoughts, maybe any questions, things like that, we present that. And then from there, we can somewhat take a roll call and vote. So initially, I think it's, if anybody would like to start with their thoughts or feedback or anything that was brought up in public comment, if they want to expand on that for staff, great time to do it.
And my one request, if you don't go in order, if you can just please announce your name before you speak.
Hi. Hi, this is Commissioner Shock. I, I do have a question in regards to the requirement of off-street parking, parking, I believe it was one, one spot. Could, could you elaborate on that or Jeff? Or could we discuss that a little bit further? I'd just love, love to understand the thinking there more.
Alright, let me pull that up. Basically, what it is, is we are allowed to require up to one parking space per unit. However, if the site is within half a mile walking distance of a high-quality transit corridor or there's a car-share vehicle with it located within one block of the parcel, then we cannot require any parking. And so this, we're already used to doing this for ADUs. It's, you know, a lot of the language from this bill is taken from ADUs. And that, that half-mile buffer does cover most of the city, I would say.
Thanks.
Yeah, that was my question, was the parking requirement. The substantiation for it, so whether it's, you know, we, we meet that half-mile criteria and most of the sites that are going to be targeted for it, that's helpful. But I do think substantiation on that is going to be good. I mean, the fact that it works for ADUs may be helpful, but I just think it's an interesting issue of the parking for it. Not really sure where, how that aligns with what SB, SB9 is pushing for, for the higher density. So I would anticipate that. So I would anticipate that may be an item that the council or the public may bring up a little bit. Because in some of the neighborhoods, it's going to be tough to get that extra spot.
Agreed, I I think it could potentially be limiting from the main purpose of, you know, of this in the first place. So.
Right, I mean, if I could just add, I think just for the reason to have it is that, you know, there's some properties that are up in the hillside that are, you know, a bit more fire hazard where the streets are narrower. And so if you were to not require any parking in those cases, that that could be a bit of a safety concern.
Understood, thank you.
But for any other commissioners, I mean, I'm gonna put you on the spot no matter what, so you can volunteer if you prefer. Commissioner Shaw, right out the gate, impressed.
So if we were to, if we were to thought exercise it, or are we just on questions right now or is this discussion?
I think both for this one. I mean, this is going to go to the council. So my recommendation is, I think we should really provide staff our thoughts on it and how we want to ultimately. So I think right now, let's just kind of brainstorm with them.
Okay, yeah, so I I'm thinking about this, you know, considering the questions raised around the parking requirement of kind of just thinking through realistically, A, what are the potential like? What is the potential visual of the actual developments that might happen from this? I'm just to see if that like even somewhat aligns with the reality of what will what will pencil from a developer perspective? Because I think what might end up happening is that we we end up, you know, passing this, but not much happens. I mean, you notice that there's not really much opposition. So it may, it may be that just like, even if you cut the parcel in half, we may end up with a situation where the land value is still too high to to be able to effectively pencil, especially with like the way construction costs are going right now. So I'm wondering if like the the most common, I suspect manifestation of housing that comes from this is probably just like an additional single family house on a smaller lot, which probably will have its own driveway if it's required to be, if it's required to be touching the street. I don't know, am I, am I missing something in terms?
Be free for everybody.
Yeah, Commissioner Samuti, we lost you. Right in the middle of a good thought.
No.
All right, I see we come back to him.
Yep.
Oh, did I just drop off?
Yep.
Yeah, like eight minutes ago.
Oh, I did?
No, 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 we lost you, I'd say a minute and a half ago, unfortunately. If you're talking, we can't hear you again.
I, oh, sorry.
Let's give Commissioner Samuti a couple of minutes to figure it out. His IT team can help out. And I'll bring it back if other commissioners wanted to continue into the discussion.
Well, I'll I'll continue on with the parking. I mean, so the the trade off is really, do we make it so that some, you know, SB nine is not, doesn't pencil out for some properties because you, because of the parking requirement? Right, that's, that's one aspect of it. The other is if we don't have that parking requirement, then we get more parking down the street, which leads to additional congestion, perhaps hazard in the event of a fire that, you know, in some of the, up in the hills. And so that's that, I think that's essentially the trade offs that's being considered, right?
Yeah, I sorry, if I I could just comment on that too, I I think yeah, I I I think this is what Commissioner Samuti, feel free to interrupt me, was referring to, but just like essentially, there's these limitations already to building and and it, are we creating more? I guess this is broadly what I'm just curious about is are we creating more limitations that's going then to discourage development in the first place? Like, for example, short term rentals already, short term rentals aren't allowed. And I know that that's not something we can change, but I'm curious if if there's data to to back up that that's in fact how how these rentals are used. Sorry, I I might, I'm just thinking out loud here, but just would love to get your thoughts.
If that was the question, I apologize, I sort of missed what the question was. Jessica, you get it?
I was, sorry, my my question, I guess I thought this was questions and I'm new here, so feel free to miss, to direct me if I'm totally out here. I thought this was questions, but also discussion. So that was more of a, a question for the group was if if others feel like we're adding more limitations or if these limitations, to your point, John, completely make sense for the safety and the congestion and and all of all of, all of the items that you listed. So it was more, more of a discussion question for the group.
Can you guys hear me now? This is Commissioner Samuti.
Yes. We can hear you.
You guys can hear me?
Yes.
I'm on phone now. I switched over. All right, so I think to Commissioner, to Commissioner Shaw's question, what I, what I was, what I was getting at was, I suspect that what will pencil the most, given just like the the value of the land, it's and the realistic sort of what will pencil in general for projects? Is that we might just see like an additional single family house that's built on the split lots because they have a minimum size and they're still in very heavily single family neighborhoods. So I suspect that the houses that will be built will have their own driveways, in which case like the on street parking will be mitigated to a certain degree, just by virtue of like the what's likely to be developed on those properties. That's, that's my suspicion. And that was, you know, part of what I'm thinking from a conversation piece, I may be missing something. And that's where I wanted to see a potential map of where the affected properties would even be in the city. Because I think that will give us a really clear sense. Like if it's in the middle of Terre Linda, for example, you like, you, you pretty much know that it's going to be a single family house, like only. Whereas if it's in a different neighborhood, you know, it might be, it might be slightly multi family, but you know, then we can also get an assessment of like what the actual parking situation is in those spots. And that can kind of mediate our specific concern for San Rafael in terms of like what properties might this fall under. Good comment. So maybe, and before we move on, I did see that our community development director popped in for a second. If she would like to respond to anything.
Yeah, I just, the only thing I wanted, I just heard Commissioner Shaw mentioned short term rentals and not sure if there was a, you know, kind of, you were speculating on, you know, the value of reducing certain restrictions like short term rental requirements or limitations?
No, no, I wasn't suggesting that, sorry. Um, I I was, apologies, I was just sharing the existing rules that are in in place that obviously aren't too like, and what we're discussing. I I was just talking about if if we're potentially providing more limitation from, from building, from making this happen actualized. I understand that that is a law that is not up for discussion.
Correct, it's, short term rentals are not allowed per SB nine, and I don't know if it'd be helpful if I should show the, you tell me, I can show the slides again. That list, the items that you do, that we as a city do have discretion over, would that be helpful or?
Yeah.
Yes, I I think it would be helpful, but again, I know I'm new here, so I can also spend time on that after this call.
This is, how do I make this custom slideshow? These are the objective standards that are left to city discretion for the two unit developments, which is the construction of up to two units. The first one is is you are able to impose a maximum floor area greater than eight hundred, we have to allow eight hundred square feet units. Staff has chosen not to limit the maximum floor area. Four units that are greater than eight hundred square feet, we can impose a maximum height limit and impose minimum setbacks up to the district minimum. And staff has chosen just to go with the underlying zoning districts and not to impose any additional standards. We could impose no side or rear setbacks other than to accommodate life and safety. Staff has recommended to implement the four foot side and rear yard setbacks, kind of outlined in SB nine. And the final one is we can impose no required parking as as for the discussion. And that would be no required parking in any situation, because as Jeff pointed out, many of the lots would be within a half mile walking distance and he has a better of a high quality transit station, Jeff, you can correct me, or a car share.
Right, and if it would help the group, I could even share my screen right now and show you which parts of the city that half mile buffer applies to.
That'd be amazing.
That'd be great.
So so just to clarify while Jeff's doing that, if the house is close enough to transit or there's ride share nearby, car share nearby, then we cannot impose a parking restriction?
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
So you you see here, all all of this sort of orangish, redish buffer, that's the half mile buffer. So it covers, you know, most of the city, there's sort of these slivers to the the southwest, this kind of sliver in here to the west, and then this large chunk to the east. But otherwise, all of the other parcels within that buffer, we cannot require any parking.
Now, how much of that is? Sorry, go ahead.
Go on, all right.
I'm just gonna ask, how how much of that is because there's car share nearby as opposed to near transit center?
This is only transit.
Only transit, okay.
Yeah. Stop sharing now, but just wanted to give you guys a sense.
And and the transit center is defined as a bus stop?
Transit corridor, yeah, includes bus stops, but it has to, and I don't, I don't have the definition, but it's basically like every fifteen minutes or so service, I'll, I'd have to look it up, but it's a very specific standard.
Okay.
Any last discussion ideas? I think this is helpful.
I was wondering, I would be allowed to address the public commenters' comments and questions?
This is regarding the hierarchy?
The hierarchy as well as the the coverage.
Yeah, yeah, no, that'd be great, because I had those questions as well.
Okay, so the lot coverage is not one of those items that we do have discretion over. So it would be what is in our existing ordinance. And and as to the hierarchy, that is obviously open to discussion because that is a discretionary item to assist with. Essentially so that if someone does need waivers, we're not in what is a streamlined process kind of arguing over, no, we don't want that, we want that. The idea behind putting natural state and lot coverage first, and I agree wholeheartedly with with preserving the open spaces. But those are more coverage requirements as opposed to a setback, which is where you're going to locate it, as opposed to if you can locate this, that we're talking about to accommodate eight hundred square feet, which is actually a pretty small unit. So those I put first because I feel that the limiting factors would actually probably be the natural state in the lot coverage. It's very unlikely that you would meet natural state. The only reason you couldn't meet it would be the front setback. But again, that was my reasoning, I should say, our reasoning behind this hierarchy. But that again, is exactly why we have public comment and input from the commission.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you addressing that. I I was a little, honestly, I didn't really understand how it was being applied. So what I would say is when presenting this for the final approval, I think a discussion as to what the, what those standards are and how they would be incorporated would be good. So my thought in reviewing this is it's very abstract. It's looking at a statute and applying it in ordinance. I felt like real life application was kind of missing from it. So whether it's incorporating a black acre example and saying this is how this would be implemented on a lot, that would maybe help to connect the dots for the public to understand exactly what you mean. Because some of this was to me, I know it because I know SB nine, but it was still hard to kind of understand. And and not your fault at all, it's hard to understand SB nine, period. But I think a little bit of a application through a hypothetical would be helpful. And then incorporating the hierarchies in that black acre example would have been really helpful. Because when you get laid that out, I really didn't understand, what is, what is this hierarchy in the development standards? And what does that mean into a project? So I get it now, but I think kind of going through and saying how it would be applied would have been really helpful. Um, the the order, I really don't have any comment, I think it's a tough call. Yeah, I I mean, I I'll defer to any other commissioners on it. I think the public comment raised a really good point on it in terms of flipping it on the, on its head, but I, yeah, I don't know. I think it's fine as it is.
Yeah, Leslie, if if you could just talk through the implications of flipping one to four, that that would be helpful, I think.
And the implications are that so first of all, thank you both to Bill as well as all of you for your input on this. Implication would be that if we had a lot that was using SB nine and the existing standards would not allow the accommodation of up to two, you know, units of up to eight hundred square feet in size. They may just choose one, but they may choose two. Then it's similar to density bonus, like something's got to give to allow these units to happen. So does the city have a preference of what they would rather see? So the first thing we would do is if we move natural state to four, is that if we can accommodate those units by reducing the lot coverage or allowing additional lot coverage, then not affecting any other development standards, we would do that. The next, after say we're like lot coverage is fine, it's just that it's such a small lot, we can't meet this, I don't know, the setback. So the next would be like, okay, instead of the fifteen foot front yard setback, we would move that fifteen foot setback until we can accommodate that eight hundred square foot unit. Third would be the second floor area limitations, which I almost feel is a nonentity for a unit of eight hundred square feet inside. But it could, could happen, you can have a little silo. And then the fourth, if it were to be flipped, would be assuming we still couldn't accommodate this unit, it would be because of the natural state. And then we'd say, okay, you don't need to meet the natural state until you meet the eight hundred square feet.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Okay, I think I'm gonna put everybody on the spot and go through commissioners, provide your thoughts or comments. And maybe we'll do that and then, well, you know what? Would the commission like to do that? Or if somebody would like to end, make a motion to approve the resolution and recommend this item, then we can have, if anyone would like to make any amendments. So how about I start there, if anybody would like to make a motion?
This is Commissioner. Uh, business commissioner, I'll make a motion to accept the resolution.
Commissioner Samuzi, I'll second.
Great, so we have a motion and a second. Anyone, maybe we'll start, uh, with Commissioner Harris? Comments, thoughts, any last ideas?
No, I think everyone pretty much addressed it, I was concerned about parking as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Shaw?
Hi, uh, second, uh, Commissioner Harris, I think everyone addressed it, so thank you.
Great. Commissioner Havelin?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Samuzi?
Uh, maybe, no amendments, but maybe you had made a recommendation about some suggestions on, on how staff might present uh, to city, to city council to kind of like front-run some of those potential concerns. Um, I would throw into the comments you made there, uh, maybe a recommendation to include some hypothetical economic examples, um, of different project types that would actually pencil. Um, just again, to be able to communicate something to, uh, citizens about like, you know, realistically, what is actually going to be coming in, um, you know, over the next couple of years if this passes, to allay, you know, potential concerns.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree, I think, uh, the public comment as well talked a little bit about sort of the limitations by the design. So one is, is an example, the other would be the, the impacts of this, I think is going to be critical for the community to understand. On a statewide level, there's still sort of this fear that I've read or heard across, that there's going to be an infusion of massive density. And we all know that, that most sites don't meet the criteria financially, not just feasibly. So the financial information would be helpful, I think, to a certain degree, maybe a spec, you know, the other one would be the affordability, is this going to meet the goal of increasing affordability by design? Maybe not, maybe it is, but I think that wasn't touched upon, and I felt like that was somewhat missing, it may not be in the purview of what you want to present, but I would at least anticipate that issue may come up, and having sort of a, a thought as to how to address it. And, uh, ultimately, yeah, maybe that, that example, again, thank you Commissioner Samuzi on that, um, expanding that example to the financials would be great, so. Okay, let's do a roll call.
All right, Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hemen?
Yes.
Commissioner Samuzi?
Yeah.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Mercado?
Yes. Very, thank you, great job.
Thank you for your input.
Yeah, hope it does well. All right, I'm looking at my script. So our next item is rules and procedures and the selection of liaisons.
Yes, thank you. Um, this item is amend the planning commission rules and procedures and conduct a selection of liaison to the DRB, to DRB meaning for the second half of the year. So, um, we will call this our bi-annual, um, planning commission meeting, so. On April eighteenth, the city council approved the one-year pilot program for streamlined design review of certain residential projects. Projects that are eligible for streamlined review at the planning commission are residential projects that require a major environmental design review and include either residential loretta, new construction for two to ten residential units, the staff report said up to ten, it's actually two to ten residential units, or additions to existing multifamily residential properties with three to ten existing units, and no more than forty percent of building area and no more than three additional units. These projects will be reviewed concurrently by two appointed design review board members, the chair and the landscape architect, who will attend the PC meeting and, um, participate and provide their recommendations at the same meeting and prior to planning commission deliberation. Um, staff, in order to accommodate this pilot program, staff has revised the rules and procedures to reflect these changes, and the revisions were presented, um, in your exhibit, attached to this exhibit one, with, actually, it says strikeout and, and for deleted text, which there actually wasn't, and underlined for added text, that starts on page six of mine. And I think I, if you have it before you, I can share it on the screen, um, else I don't know if there are any questions or concerns, um, in reflecting the addition of the designer board representatives when applicable to the rules and procedures.
Thank you.
And to see them, yeah, my thought, sorry, was to do this first and then select the the DRB liaisons for the second half, so we can do one than the other.
To approve the, uh, the procedure changes?
Correct.
Okay. Questions for staff? Nope. Do we have any public to open it up to?
Nope.
Okay, opened and closed. Then we can either deliberate, or somebody wants to make a motion to accept the revised procedures, we can do that.
Commissioner Haven, I'll second.
Who is that? Haven, I heard. I know this to cut. Okay. I'll take a roll call, um, Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hemen?
Yes.
Um, wow, what am I looking at, I'm sorry, Commissioner Samuzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Mercado?
Yes. So now the, we'll look at the liaison schedule?
Correct, so, also in the staff report, um, we we expect planning commissioners to serve as a liaison to the DRB for two months during the year. Um, this entails up to two DRB meetings within the month. Um, and typically, we asked commissioners to sign up for the two months at the annual meeting in January. But due to the vacancy on the, on the commission, I thought it would be more equitable just to do half the year, and then we, we had our new member. Um, she wasn't stuck with the worst months of the year, um. So, with that, we have our second meeting, and on the, um, second half of the year to assign liaisons, ever, um, the chair is not expected to serve, and Acting Chair Alder Mercado has already done his two months, so yay. And so with that, um, I think we could just do it the way we did it in January, and for Commissioner Shaw, with just, the dates are available again on page two of the, um, the planning commission, so I thought if you are available for Thursday month, if you just want to call out, I can put your name, so what I'm looking for is for Commissioner Shaw to volunteer for two months, and the rest of you have one, and we will get Vice Chair Saudi, um, whatever's left over.
I'm, I'm happy to do.
What's that, what month?
Commissioner Haven, I'm happy to do November.
November, cool.
Sorry, Leslie, did you want me to, to, to volunteer right now for those two months?
You know, the quicker you volunteer, the more.
Yes, absolutely. Um, so I'm happy to volunteer, is it preferable to have them back-to-back, or to space them out, sorry, I have so many questions this first time?
That is really a personal choice.
That's a personal choice, okay, um, I can do, uh, February and, um, I don't know, February.
July, oh, August, sorry, September, October, and December.
Got it, sorry, um, okay, I could do October and, um, uh, and, uh, July's gonna be tough, um, I could do December, I'll be around.
Commissioner Samuzi, I'll grab August.
Commissioner Harris, I'll take July.
You? Commissioner, um, so how do you guess, September? Vice Chair Saudi, great, thank you. Um, and one thing that I put in here that, sorry, I was rather new, and I didn't think about it before, but I think it would be great, um, during our last item, which is commission communication, is if the DRB liaison can just report back on what, what happened at DRB, um, for the rest of the commission, and not an essay, just a few words of the item, anything that, you know, lessons learned, takeaways, that would be great, so.
Awesome, this is Commissioner Harris. And I was the liaison for the meeting that happened last Tuesday, and the item up for discussion was the planned North Gate development, which is a huge project, as you all know, and so essentially, what came from that meeting, it was almost four hours, but what came from that meeting was the fact that we need another meeting, they, they were, the, the review board was not comfortable moving forward, just given the number of concerns that were brought up. Um, some of those concerns included, uh, a building that is now proposed to be seven feet, it was, or, I'm sorry, seven stories, and it was previously, I believe, five stories, there were concerns about parking, um, traffic, noise, town square, there were just a number of concerns raised, so, uh, the next steps were, the developer had a, um, uh, they called for comments the following day, um, that Wednesday, and I'm not sure when the follow-up will be with the design review board, but there, um, nothing has been settled from that, so, still open. And that's all.
It looks like we may be looking at it going back in July for more focused design review, so Commissioner Harris, if that's true, uh, you'll be able to report back. So thank you.
Oh, and one more comment, the, um, the IJ did a really good write-up on that meeting, if you guys are interested.
Hi, Drama.
And thank you for sticking out four hours, that's tough. Do we need to vote on that, Leslie?
No, not on the, not on the selection, no.
Okay. And I like that idea, reporting back on the DRB meetings, I think that's, yeah, gives us a good heads-up of what may be coming down the line. Okay, so we'll move on to director's report, if there's anything you'd like to provide.
Yes, so, city council passed, uh, passed a fire-safe roof ordinance, um, to upgrade Class A, a little bit talking through translation here, by Class A type roof to something more fire-resistant, so to finally upgrade the wood shake and other roofs that are more prone to fire. Uh, city council also passed the public art program, um, or public art that would be on, within the public realm, and those art projects will be reviewed by, this is the art commissions, that's through Library Parks and Recreation, I didn't say that verbatim. Um, at our next meeting, which is going to be on June fourteenth, and again, we have an item that is going to be subject to streamlined review, so we will just streamline design review, so we will um, have some of our design review board colleagues, um, join us. In addition, um, we will have a presentation on the fair housing reports, and that will be provided to you before the meeting. And the only final, um, upgrade is to, to vacation or time off by our technical whiz, um, we are postponing the, the hybrid meeting, uh, the first hybrid meeting for planning commission until July, it was supposed to be on June twenty-eighth, which actually, very honestly, we had nothing, um, scheduled for yet anyway, but it's now being pushed to July. So one day, we will see each other in person.
Has everyone, I'm just curious, has everyone met in, before in person, or has a lot of us, have a lot of you joined primarily during, during the pandemic?
I joined during the pandemic, so I've met a couple of the commissioners in person, but not all.
I too joined during the pandemic.
Oh, really, okay.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, I think Vice Chair, uh, Mercado is the only one that has been in person, right?
Is that right?
I heard it in twenty nineteen.
Oh, you did, okay. Yeah. Two.
Yep, so. But that is the director's report.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, any updates you want to provide? Gossip, cheeseman, jokes?
I just want to say welcome to Commissioner Shaw, it's great to have you here, and, um, I appreciate your participa- participation and energy in your first meeting, and looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, that's very kind, thank you, and likewise.
Yeah, I'll second that, great job jumping right in. Anyone else, any other updates from the commissioners? No? Great. All right, well, we'll adjourn the meeting, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, be well, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.